Called to order and announced at a quorum is present for the Community Impact Fee Advisory Committee Regular Meeting. Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at eight fifty P M. Public comments, non-agenda item, public comments, white card. Comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda related topics for a length of time not to exceed three minutes per person. Agenda item, public comments, yellow card, comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda and agenda items combined for the length of time not to exceed five minutes total per person on all items. Exceeding public hearings, comments. On public hearing, items must be made when the items come before the committee and not to exceed two minutes per person. No action or discussion may be taken by the committee during the public comments on non-agenda items. We don't have any, oh wait, I'm supposed to speak, okay. Consent agenda items, all of the following consent agenda items weren't considered to be self-explanatory by committee, Impact Fee Advisory Committee, and will be enhanced with one motion. There will be no separate discussions on the, these items unless requested by a chair or a committee member, and with the event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Consent agenda item number one, consider discussion and possible action to approve the minutes for the January tenth, twenty twenty-four Community Impact Fee Committee, Committee, oh sorry, Community Impact Fee Advisory Committee Regular Session.
I move to approve the minutes for the January tenth, twenty twenty-four Community Impact Fee Advisory Committee Regular Session.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Terry, second by Commissioner Chavis on the favor.
Aye, aye.
Oppose. Regular agenda items, consider discussion and possible action on revised roadway impact calculation.
Okay, so, um, as you recall, we discussed the, um, the last meeting and there were some, um, requests that y'all had made. Um, I did look into removing the thoroughfare plan from the estimate for the roadway impact fees, but every other city that has roadway impact fees includes the thoroughfare plan. So my suggestion is we leave it in there. I know it makes the fees higher, but I mean, there's a reason why, you know, you're creating these fees, which would be to help pay for these roadway improvements. Um, so basically, we can recap their one-time fees, they're paid when the building permit, it's based on the same chapter in the state code as the water wastewater impact fees. Um, you can do it for water, wastewater, roadway, and drainage. Um, and if you already know, Mainor has water and wastewater impact fees that we have, um, sent to council and they approved in July twenty twenty-three. Um, so recap, the service unit is different for roadway impact fees, it's per vehicle mile, not L U Es. Um, and then basically, we use the same estimated growth between twenty twenty-three and twenty thirty-three that we did for wastewater and water. Um, and they're broken out between residential and non-residential, and residential is broken out between single-family and multifamily, and then non-residential is retail, service, and basic. As you know, we came up with the three service areas for Mainor, because basically, you know, it's limited to six-mile trip length, so, um, we tried to make it as even as possible. So, um, you know, we, we've come, we, we've discussed this previously, the traffic demand factor, whether it's for single or multifamily, by the number of dwelling units, and then for non-residential, it's based on the square footage with the, um, calculated traffic demand factor for, um, whether it's, um, you know, retail or commercial or whatever. Um, and so basically, it's the same estimate, no, these numbers have changed since we started discussing this, it's the same of, of estimated, um, existing miles. There we added, uh, this is the roadway impact fee, um, so basically, it breaks it down in the service area, shows what roads are, Mainor Roads, Travis County, Tex dot, or on the thoroughfare plan. Um, this one's just a recap of all of the proposed projects where we have T I As or, um, older T I As that have already been approved. Um, and this one just shows the proposed projects for each service area. And that is the list, and, oh my gosh, I can't read that. I hope, hopefully y'all can read it. And so basically, it's, it's the same list that we've had, I didn't modify it at all, um, and basically, um, for service area one, oh my gosh, I can't read it, um, over half of them um, listed are from, from the thoroughfare plan. Um, this one's a little bit easier to read, uh, so this one, there's only three from the thoroughfare plan. And then service area three, there's one, two, three, four, six. So basically, you know, we're, we use the cost for those projects to come up with the maximum impact fee for each service area. And basically, it's for, you know, standard, it's only for roadway C I P projects, um, and it's based on the ten-year, um. So basically, service area one came out to fourteen fifty-five oh eight, service area two, ten thirty-four oh one, and service area three, ten ninety-five point one nine, which that did not change from what we met the last time. Um, so what I did here was I compared, okay, if we modified the maximum impact fee and we do fifty percent what it was and then seventy-five percent what it would be too. And so I did that for each of the service areas, and then, um, we went through, um, the same calculation, I didn't change any of that, so basically, um, so if, if the maximum cost for single family, um, for five hundred units, it'd be three point one million. Um, twenty thousand square foot office building would be a hundred thirteen thousand. Um, if you do fifty percent, then it's cut in half, so it'll be one point five million and fifty-six thousand. If you do the seventy-five percent, then it's seven hundred eighty-two thousand and twenty-eight thousand. And so, um, I basically did that for each of the different ones, this would be for a retail center. Um, so you see, um, when we do the fifty percent, it's a lot cheaper, seventy-five percent. Um, you know, it's even better, um, but in the past, city council wouldn't do more than a fifty percent reduction in the fee. So, um, so basically, did the same thing for each of the service areas. And so you can see, you know, how, basically, how are things adjusted? You know, based on the different, um, credits and so like I said, you can see the difference, you know, based on whether it's fifty or seventy-five percent and so. So that's the max fee, that's in service area three. So, um, that's ten ninety-five point one nine for the max. And then, um, you've got for the retail at fifty percent, uh, which is a hundred and six thousand. Uh, industrial, it's two hundred and eight thousand. And then if you do seventy-five percent, then it's, um, you know, a lot lower, fifty-three thousand, a hundred four thousand. So we can open the floor to discuss, um, we can make a recommendation to the city, but at this point, we just need to, um, basically, like I said, we can send in a recommendation. At this point, it's just, you know, are we happy with the maximum amount? Because basically, everything will be based on this maximum amounts. Um, I know there have been discussions of trying to tweak the areas so they're pretty close. And it's been really hard to do just because of where the growth is and how the city is laid out and where, you know, the growth gonna be in specific areas and there's no really way to adjust. So, you know, get them with, yep. Yeah, I mean, they're pretty close, I would think, but, um, so yeah, so, yeah, any questions or comments?
So when you mean growth, like, we know nothing's gonna grow around here, but growth is gonna happen past Shado Plan and stuff like that.
Yeah, so it's in the east and then going north on nine seventy-three by Red Lane. And with the, you know, the six-mile service area, it's really hard, you know, I mean, obviously, down here, there's not gonna be as much work done. And, you know, and a lot of stuff's already been done for like Lagos and everything on, you know, the south side of two ninety. So it's kinda hard to, you know, because basically, it's just, you know, this part's not growing like the other two service areas are.
And what are we opining on there?
What?
What are we opining on?
Um, I just basically, if, um, I guess one would be, do y'all wanna include the thoroughfare plan items? Which, like I said, every other city includes them. So, um, I recommend including them because that's the only way the city will probably ever get enough money to fund some of the work. And then, basically, um, if the maximum, um, amount for the roadway impact fees for each service area. So like, if you do. Because like what we did for the water and wastewater, we recommended a fifty percent, like, reduction in the fee. So, so, you know, here, you can see, so the maximum impact fee for one is fourteen fifty-five oh eight, two, ten thirty-four oh one, and three, ten ninety-five point one nine.
To me, the seventy-five percent reduction brings it a lot closer to reasonable in my mind. And I, I think I pointed out last time that I talked to, um, one of the, one of the people I talked to was, uh, Brian Masterman with Majestic. Large, I think they're the largest industrial owner in the United States, he's a super reasonable guy. And he thought that, um, you know, a dollar a foot would not kill the deal, he thought anything above that would be, uh, you know, pretty bad. We're doing a project with Majestic right now at Decker Lane, it's a million square feet. We have about five hundred thousand square feet on the ground now, and that, that's his opinion, they have about, um, I think a hundred million square feet of industrial product that they own in the United States, so I think they're the largest private owner. That was his opinion. The retail developer I talked to was much more negative than that. Uh, he thought that, uh, you know, he's the developer of the Hobby Lobby, he's actually coming here on Thursday to meet with, um, the city manager and economic development director, but his opinion was that, you know, it's pretty negative, he thinks that they kill more deals than anything else. Um, those are the opinions I know, I think the seventy-five makes it closer to reasonable in my mind. I know, you, you didn't have some data on Hutto as well?
Um, yeah, that's later on in the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz I looked in at the, at your suggestion at the last meeting, I looked into what Hutto was charging.
Good.
Said that they do have a roadway impact fee that they charge.
They do, okay, I understand that, but if you look at it, I guess what's interesting about, I only glanced at it for three seconds, but it's dramatically different than Pluggerville's, and that's who they're competing with. So they're lucky that they have Pluggerville charging so much and they're the next-door neighbor competing. And Mainor doesn't have that option.
Yeah, like I said, as the committee, you can make the recommendation to council whether they will go with the seventy-five percent. You know, your guess is as good as mine. Um, I know for water wastewater, sometimes they wanna do more than fifty, but that's usually people do fifty. So, um, like I said, y'all can decide as a committee what y'all feel comfortable with, and, um, like I said, we can submit it to council and see what they think. So, or if y'all don't feel comfortable at all with these roadway impact fees, we could always, you know, as a, as a committee, y'all could always vote to me, like, we don't think it's, and the cities benefit at this time for roadway impact fees. But that's ultimately what y'all need to decide as a committee.
So when we, uh, we approve, uh, impact fees, who is it then at, um, at the end deciding what percentage of a savings or, uh, is, is actually gonna be, you know, implemented?
City council. So basically, um, what I do, what I did for the water and wastewater was I came up with a report, it lists all the projects, the costs, you know, what the maximum amount is, the fifty, fifty percent credit. And then they basically vote to amend the existing ordinance, and typically, they'll do the fifty percent credit, so it'll be half of whatever's calculated. Like the wastewater, um, was a, was it that now, seventy?
Seven thousand one ninety-three.
Yeah, so it was like over fourteen thousand, but we recommended doing the fifty percent. And so that's what council voted to approve was the fifty percent.
But why wouldn't they go with seventy-five percent reduction if it's, if it's between that and, you know, if there's a reasonable argument to be made that there shouldn't be roadway impact fees, I think there is a reasonable argument to be made, why wouldn't they go with what's a reasonable number if fifty percent isn't reasonable?
I can't speak for council, I, you know, you know, Scott, do you, I mean?
Uh, it's just, it's their priority, I mean, if they want, as Paulie mentioned, like, to have the additional funding to get larger improvements faster, you know, bond less money to do roadways, cuz they can use this funding. It, it's, it's their discretion, um, up to that fifty percent amount, because remember earlier, we did opt not to do the financing plan, so anything um, higher, I'm gonna say it wrong again, but you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, charge more, um, was not recommended, um, by you all, so they, they are at the fifty percent mark as the highest they can go. That makes sense.
But why wouldn't they go lower if it was reasonable?
They could, it's just, we won't know, the, this hasn't been bothered for them yet, we haven't given them anything to recommend or discuss yet, so.
Yeah. And like Scott said, it's at their discretion, I mean, I could go and I could present the stuff.
So Barth, are you, you said the industrial developers were okay at a seventy-five percent?
They were okay, they were okay, he said a dollar a foot he didn't think would kill a project. If it was a dollar foot and on the hundred, I think it was a hu, what's a hundred thousand square foot industrial at seventy-five percent, it was around a dollar a foot, I believe.
I think it depended on the service area.
Dollar thirty-eight, so, man, it's a little higher than he thought was, uh, but it was, you know, it was, it was in the realm of reasonable, it's maybe a little bit higher, but that was what he told me, it was a dollar a foot, he thought that was the kind of fee that would, uh, you know, not, not hurt a project. And I brought it up last time, I mean, you could put it at ten dollars if you want, and then you can have an infinite amount of money, but if nobody develops, no money comes in. That's like, uh, I know that Scott, you said that, uh, they want more money to fund it, but if this roadway impact fee gives less money, then it's going in the wrong direction.
And then along those lines, you also, you said the retail guy you talked to said that any impact fee would kill it.
He did, he said roadway impact fees kill more, he, he develops around the nation, he develops Hobby Lobbies, academies, a lot of different, uh, you know, big box stuff, and he said it's, you know, especially in retail, it's especially hard, um, right now with interest rates, the internet, and it's, it's, it's challenging, he thinks roadway impact fees kill more projects than any other type of fee, and that, that was his input. I'm trying to take a, you know, not a hard-line developer, but try a reasonable, you know, trying to balance and come up with what I feel is honestly reasonable, not from a complete developer perspective.
Oh yeah, no, I get it, I mean, on the one hand, we want the extra tax dollars, we want the extra business, we want the extra income to come here, but we also, you know, the, if we don't have good roads, that's a problem too, I mean, it's gotta be a balance, I, for sure.
Sure, I agree.
On the comparison chart that you have for the different cities there.
Where is that?
It's, uh,
Tab three.
Yeah, that's a, agenda item later on. I, I don't know if we wanna.
Does that, uh, represents, uh, it looks like it represents area two, or am I looking at it the wrong way?
And we've gone over this a bunch of times, but this chart is a little bit inaccurate. We, uh, the reason it's inaccurate is because, and we've probably brought up this maybe five times so far, but, uh, the roadway impact fee is not multiplied by the multiplier, and it's not changed to be multiplied by the multiplier, so when you're comparing the total impact fees with other cities that don't have roadway impact fees, then you're understating how much Mainor's charging. I thought you changed it at one point.
I, I thought I did too, I may have accidentally sent the wrong spreadsheet, um, you know.
Because you have to really multiply those numbers by about three.
Oh, it's, it's four point three.
Four point three, okay, that's even worse, you have to multiply by four point three uh, all the, on the roadway impact fees, and then you would have to take that number, add it on to the other one, it'd be it's, it's quasi apples to apples on cities that have roadway impact fees, but ones that don't have it, it's understating it big time, because you have to multiply the roadway impact fee by the multiplier, which is four point.
Well, the thing is, when I look at the one for like Austin and stuff, I don't know if they multiply it times the multiplier or not.
But you know, the ones that don't have anything, it's, it's not accurate compared.
Right, um. Yeah, but we're, should we be comparing more to ones that actually have roadway impact fees?
I think so, cuz that's who you're competing against. Elgin doesn't have them. Austin doesn't have them.
Austin has roadway impact fees.
E T J doesn't.
Oh, nope, you can't have impact fees in the E T J.
Okay, that's, you, that's who, like, with, the, the project that we're doing on Decker Lane with Majestic's in the Austin E T J, and there was no roadway impact fee.
Because you can't do roadway impact fees in the E T J, it has to be within city limits.
I understand, but I'm saying from a competition perspective, it's relevant. Majestic could have chosen to come to Mainor, or they could have chose to come to Austin E T J and then chose that.
Well, I mean, it is what it is, I mean, you know, did Majestic even reach out to Mainor? I don't know. You know, and they probably are in the E T J because there's less rules to follow and stuff. And less impact fees than if they were in Austin.
Sure.
So it's the same thing where they, you know, chose to be in the E T J, so Austin's not gonna get some of their money either because they didn't wanna pay Austin's impact fees.
I'm just giving you the feedback that I was, that I, that's the feedback I was given.
Well, I know, I, I'm just saying though, um, we keep going in circles about this stuff, um, you know, it's like every week, every time I have to update the spreadsheet and stuff, and it's hard to keep track of everything. So mistakes were made and I will take that, but, um, I think we just need to discuss it and maybe try to finalize the decision because this has gone on for over a year for the roadway impact fees. You know, and I appreciate your feedback and stuff, but it's like the same stuff every meeting. I, I don't feel like we're progressing any.
One of the things that was asked though was to provide it without the, an example without the transportation plan.
Correct, but I made the decision that since all the other cities with roadway impact fees included that, that we should include it. Because if not, the impact fees that you would get, we couldn't even use it to improve the roads that are on the thoroughfare plan. That's, um, you know, if you look, Fluderville does it, Taylor does it. Everybody has it on there, because that's the only way cities will ever be able to afford to construct new roads where they need to be.
And can you, can you remind me, you'd mentioned last meeting, and I just forgot, I'm sorry, that this money can only be used for certain things and not in that service area or something like that?
Yeah, so whatever money comes in for each service area has to be in that service area to improve roads in that, and you can't repair existing roads, it's only to expand capacity or to create, um, new roads.
So like this new development that we just talked about in the planning and zoning meeting, will those roadway impact fees be used to work on Tower Lane or how does, would, would that?
Um, they're gonna be ahead of probably this fee being implemented, so they probably won't pay any, but theoretically, if, you know, this fee was implemented and they platted their property, then they would pay. But Tower is mostly a county road, so it does not apply. A year ago, we went to the city council and asked if they wanted to annex certain county roads so we could include them in this plan, and they said no, they wanted the county to fix them, so, uh, that's a specific example, that development wouldn't, even if they were paying, it wouldn't help Tower.
Would it help Suncrest that belongs to the city?
We only control Suncrest for s- small little, two small little segments, one of them is in front of their property, which they were planning to upgrade. Uh, so also, no.
Yeah, that's the other issue is, you know, you've got two ninety, nine seventy-three and county roads that we can't use any of the funds for either.
So we talked about using funds, it, I mean, I understand what, you know, Mr. Timberman's saying and, and, and you're brought to us. But if some of these roads are dealt with the county and we're trying to charge these people fees and we're only gonna fix five hundred feet of the road, is that correct?
Uh, we probably wouldn't, or we could use it on a small segment, I suppose, any city road in that service area. Um, but yeah, anyone, as mentioned, is developing in a service area, any roadway impact or roadway improvement within that service area is eligible, so you, you get that sort of up to six-mile area around the, the project, um, so yeah, it may not, if you pay a fee, it may not go directly to fund an improvement in front of your project, but it'll be in the vicinity. And then also, I mean, we mentioned it before too, but if, if someone's doing a traffic impact analysis and they're paying three million dollars for traffic mitigations, that reduces this fee, like, you don't pay twice. Um, so there's sort of a.
Is, is that true? That's only true if it's those roads, if it's those particular roads that are in the roadway impact fee plan.
Yeah, so that's the thing too, it's sort of.
So if you're putting money in two ninety, nine seventy-three, and you're putting three million bucks in there, and then you're getting hit with a roadway impact.
Yes, thank you.
It is double dipping.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to look at that, thank you for bringing that up, yes. They pay money to the text dot, do they still, for city roads or how that works, and maybe that's a policy decision, I don't know. Um, it gets a little into the weeds of it, if we can progress and, you know, move past, you know, if we can agree on a fee and get into the actual reports and draft reports and policies, um, we'll look into that, but right now, we're stuck talking about the fee over and over.
So like, like we were talking about this development, I know they're not impacted with this, but they would be paying three million dollars to do this analysis, and then Mainor, the city of Mainor is gonna charge them more money to, to impact these?
So that, that's what we'd have to look into, honestly, I don't know, you know, if they're paying money to text dot and all their mitigations are on text dot routes, do they still pay a roadway impact fee to the city of Mainor for city roads?
Well, they would unless there was a credit for it, they definitely would.
Yeah, that's something I'm thinking of first, probably, but I don't wanna speak to Fin Italy cuz I'm not, like, I don't have all the answers for that. So that's why it gets into the next stage, when we get into the ordinances and the policies and how this is like implemented.
Well, is there any policy proposal to give some kind of credit? That would, that would make it more reasonable by definition, if there was like some type of credit for T I A fees, but if it was only on those roads, then that would make it less reasonable.
Right, yeah, and so that's the next phase of this, if we can get to, you know, what level of credit, and then we can move forward with the policies and all of that, but we spent a year talking about just this.
So what we're saying is on, on agenda item number, number two, you know, the discussion, and so we just need to come up with a calculation, or like Mr. Timberman is saying, seventy-five percent, we just need to come up with something so we could. Seventy-five percent, we just need to come up with something so we can just take the next step forward, is that correct?
Yes, so basically it would be. It doesn't, at the seventy-five percent doesn't matter at this point, what matters at this point is, are you okay with the. The fee, the maximum fees calculated, because like Scott said, when we get to the next step, then we'll work on. Is it gonna be a fifty percent credit or seventy-five? We need to set, are y'all okay with approving? The fourteen fifty-five oh eight and the ten thirty-four oh one and the ten ninety-five nineteen. And using those numbers to, and then proceed to come up with the other, you know, then we would look through and do the recommendation to council. Whether it be the fifty percent reduction or the seventy-five percent. But what we need to do is come up with, are y'all okay with the amounts calculated? And I can go back and take the transportation fee, the cost out, I don't recommend that, because like I said. That's really, this is the only way the city will ever get enough funding with that, doing a bunch of bonds to get roads built.
Is a rule that the max allowed is fifty percent on a roadway impact fee, is that the?
Without that financing plan, yes.
Could we then recommend that the, is there anything prohibiting us from recommending that the max impact be? Whatever the calculation is for fifty percent, and then recommend a fifty percent reduction on that.
No, the fifty percent reduction has to be on what the maximum calculated fee is.
But why can't we recommend that the max calculation fee is seven twenty-seven fifty-four per vehicle mile, five seventeen and five forty-seven, what prohibits that?
Uh, because that's not what you get when you take the total amount of the proposed projects invited by the vehicle miles. In that service area, that's how it's set. I mean, that's something. We could talk with City Legal about that, cause I'm not, I'm not sure. But I know for water and wastewater, you you set the maximum, and then then they do the fifty percent reduction based on the maximum. And I don't think we can do a lower maximum, because you have to list all the projects and their costs, so they'd be like. Well, how did you get that seven twenty-seven point five four? You know, when I do the math, I get something different. So if you wanna go before council and explain that to them, then you can do it, but, you know, that's the thing. You know, there are state statutes that we have to follow, and like I said, we can look in chapter three ninety-five, but I do know for water and wastewater, it's always. We present the maximum, and then they usually vote for the fifty percent credit.
I mean, to be the final solutions is the, you know, quasi reasonable part that I don't think would kill development, but.
Alright, so we can get the ball moving on this one. For this particular agenda item, we are looking at and considering like all the the projects. And the the dollar amount associated with those projects and those service areas, and then divide that by that magic number to.
Yeah, the vehicle mile.
Right, to get this this number, so if we're trying to lower the maximum. Impact fee according to the calculation, we're eliminating some of those projects in order to do that, essentially, right?
Yes, which would basically mean the city paid money for a thoroughfare plan that will probably never. Be enacted because the city won't have funds, partly, and yeah, I mean.
Or they may just have money enough to do one of the projects on there, rather than the fifteen that's, you know, projected on there. Right, because it's only a certain amount of money on there.
Well, the thing is though, if we remove those thoroughfare projects, you can't put them back on.
Correct, so that's, yeah, that's.
Yeah, that money cannot be, the roadway impact fees can never be used for those thoroughfare projects. The city would have to come up with additional funding for those.
That's right, yeah, so just for this clarification that we're adding or. We're contemplating all those projects in there to ensure that, hey, it's captured, it's memorialized somewhere, right? And that way, that's that's how the equation is set up.
Yes.
The next stage after that piece would be, hey, how we can look at these numbers and. And see how it, you know, what percentage would be reasonable. Um, when it comes to developing and and, you know, working with the with other entities. To, you know, in these different service areas, right?
Yes.
Okay, so then now we kinda know a path moving forward, and and what charge we have. So we don't get, you know, too hung up on it, we know exactly, if this is, you know. This particular agenda item, hey, we know we need to get to the drawing board to start working on percentages that make sense. We can bring that, you know, no nonsense here, this works, if it's sixty percent. You know, versus fifty percent or whatever the case is, let's let's try to make that work. Are we, are we okay with that? Does that seem reasonable? Okay, so for, at least for this agenda item. Anybody has any issues with the actual calculation and the and the actual projects? That we have projected in in those different service areas? Do we need to take one out or add or kinda modify? Do we have any questions on the actual projected? You know, uh, cost of those, anything of that nature?
But I think if we do that, you're gonna have to recapitulate, come back and we'll be here for twenty twenty-six.
Well, but eh, no, at least it's pointed to exactly that's the issue. And so when we come back, we can solve that, you know, hey, that's clarified, let's move forward, that was answered.
Yeah, so like for service area one. You know, there's several thoroughfare plan projects on there, like, let's, you know, one, two, three. Ten projects on there. Y'all can look at it, and if there's some that maybe I wanna pull out. You know, cause you could compare that, what's in, what's listed with the map and see where it's located and whatnot. Y'all could adjust that, we can take some of them out, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take all of them out, but we could do that, and that would help lower the cost.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that that's done, though, that is an option, obviously.
Yes.
But that is just the point of the amount of projects and the the. The cost of those is directly related to the calculation and how you come up with the. The the end cost of the vehicle mile.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So I'm gonna take out any projects, just, hey, if we needed. Infrastructure, we need infrastructure, we're gonna have to figure out how to do it, and we gotta work together to do it, right? And so what what do we need to do on step two, step three, and so on? To make those things happen, to make it still attractive for developers to come and work with us. And how like in the case if they're mainly on, you know, county or state roads that it doesn't. You know, affect them negatively or double dipping and all kinds of other stuff, like what do we need to do at that point? But if we can, yeah, if we all kinda know what the end goal is in that strategy, then I think we can, we can move forward with these.
So commissioners, at this point, do I have a motion for agenda item number two?
Yeah, move with the the staff recommendation for the revised fee schedule calculations.
I have a motion by Commissioner Chavis, do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second by Commissioner Terry, all in favor? Oppose? Moving on to agenda item number three, consider discussion and possible action on comparison of roadway impact fees.
So this one is just comparing the roadway impact fees in other cities. And this is basically the ones that didn't have it, or they they don't have it, then I put that they don't have it. The only thing that was changed was I added in Hutto. And so Hutto, what they did was, and I can look more into it for the next meeting. They set their residential at seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-one cents per vehicle mile. And their non-residential for four hundred dollars per vehicle mile, but their difference is, they have one service area for the entire city. So it's not like it's broken up here, but I can look into how that came about, where they kinda just set numbers. Because if we set something like four hundred dollars, would that be more reasonable? Like I said, I just have to look into exactly. How Hutto came about doing that.
I think that's a smart policy, cause I don't think that these impact fees will affect residential development as much as it will not residential development. I think Mainor wants to promote commercial, I think that's a smart, a smart policy.
Yeah, so, yeah, so basically this is all that was, was, it's just comparing that, so what I can do is I'll. Do a deep dive and see what Hutto did and kinda come back with how they set everything up. Because I did redo it, and they do have credits when it comes to TIA's and everything. So, cause basically like the water and wastewater, it will basically, we'll work with City Legal, we'll come up with an ordinance that sets all this stuff. And so that's what, now that we've moved on from that that mountain, we can do that, basically, we can. Go before council, like, well, we did some research, and you know, this is what Hutto did, and you know, Hutto's getting all these new projects. Because this is how they did it. And so, but like I said, I I can prepare that for the next meeting. And then, like I said, we can look into exactly what they did in Hutto, because. I'm not sure how they just came up with four hundred dollars, I'm sure they had some sort of calculation.
Round Rock has it too, where they have a lower non-residential rate.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll all look at Hutto and Round Rock and see what what they did. I'm sure it's probably just something in their ordinance that they they set. So, yeah, so I will look into those two, but I don't, I don't, I don't think Austin or Leander did that.
You were pointing out to me actually on the end, that was one of your complaints, is that they're not getting the commercial development. Where Cedar Park is, and, but they're still getting the residential development, so it's not killing residential development, but it is killing commercial.
Yeah, oh yeah, I guess, that is very true for Leander. So, and Leander's, they're very, I mean, it varies from pretty low to like really high for their roadway impact fees. So, yeah, I'll look into those and I'll look into their ordinances and. And I'll see how they worded and everything, we can kinda go over what they did in their ordinances at the next meeting. So yeah, so this was just to just kinda go over, and you can see this is just the number of service areas. Like I said, Hutto only has one. So. So it can be done for one, but like I said, that's why I need to look into it, because. You know, if they did their calculation as the way they should have been done, you wouldn't get four hundred dollars, you wouldn't get like an even amount like that. So it's looking into how they they did it, so, so this was just a, you know. Discussion, as last time, was the same ones that don't have impact fees, and most of them. You know, it was because they don't have the growth like Mainor does, or they didn't think it was, you know, feasible. Cause they didn't wanna affect development in the city, so there's really no motion for this one, this is just.
So we can move on to agenda, regular agenda item number four?
Yes.
Consider discussion, consideration, discussion and possible actions on sending. The land use and service area maps to city council in order. For city council to set a date for public hearing on the maps.
Right, so just like with the water and wastewater impact fees. They have to hold a public ear- hearing, and this, you know, this is the same land use map that we use for the water and wastewater, so that didn't change. And then, as long as y'all are comfortable with the way the service areas are and showing the thoroughfare plan, then we would sit. Send this to council too, and they would just hold a public hearing on that part of it, just to accept. Those two maps at this time, so at least we can get something before them, so they kinda have an idea of what we've been doing. And so that's all it is, I said, if y'all are comfortable, like I said, the land use map is exactly the one we used for. Water and wastewater, and then this is the map we've, you know, that we use to delegate the service areas, and so if y'all don't wanna adjust the the service areas. Um, then that map should be good to go to council.
Do I have a motion for agenda item number four?
I move, we send the land use and service area maps to city council in order for council to set a date for public hearings on the maps.
I have a motion by Commissioner Terry.
Second.
Saying by Commissioner Chavis, all in favor? Oppose, motion passes. Agenda item number five, consideration, discussion and possible action on approving the roadway. Projects list for the roadway impact fees.
So we kinda talked about this during item number three, but basically, this is the the list of all the projects. And so basically, if y'all are good to go with what's listed for each one. Then you just need to vote to approve the list, and that will be the set list for this update, and we will not make any more modifications to that list.
I have one question, so is there not gonna be any recommendation at all to the city council that it should be lower than fifty percent?
That would be more when we go towards the ordinance part, when we look into, well, how we would write the ordinance, like how Hutto did it. You know, because, you know, obviously, they, you know, counseled him like, oh yeah, let's set it four hundred, they looked into it, so. That, where, you know, right now, we're just approving the amount, and we can work on what the, like, recommendation for the credits. Moving forward now that we have that amount set.
But it comes back here before, or does it just go to council?
It'll come back here before, cause what I do, we just, we discuss it, and then I prepare a memo, and it goes over everything we've discussed, and. Like, this is the committee's recommendation for what it should be set at.
Okay.
And then, like I said, they might listen to you, they may not. So, yeah, so that would be, that's the next step, now that we've got the service areas approved. The the amounts approved, and once y'all approve this list, then we won't add or remove anything. So now's the time to speak.
So do I have a motion for agenda item number five?
Move to approve the roadway project list on the impact fee.
I have a motion for Commissioner Chavis, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Terry, all in favor? A motion to adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-nine for the SIFT committee meeting.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jerry.
Second.
Commissioner, second by Commissioner Chavis, all in favor?
Alright.